I think they crossed off a couple on there. It could have been from Rhonda. Some people got to retire. Oh, nice. No, Sheeta's done this one too. Okay, good.
Hey. Gene. Right in the city of Porterville.
Ooh. Good.
The one we invaded. That's the one the car works it smells so bad that people are getting sick. Apple do well.
Two. Sure. Washington.
Good morning, welcome to the April 29th Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand with me as we salute the flag of our country. We'll be led by Supervisor Vanderpool and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation's God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. We will begin this morning with Board of Supervisor matters Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we had quite a weekend in Porterville. We had the Iris Festival that started Saturday morning. We had the rodeo parade in Springville and we finished it off with a rodeo. So, it was pretty busy that day. Then Sunday, we had Sutton Pistachios putting in a park for the community and we had our workday out there where we planted plants. I got out there about a little before nine and ran one of those Oklahoma diesels, that's a wheelbarrow, and helped put out the stuff. At all the chips and things that the local communities donated and there was a lot of people out there, I would say 150, 160 people. A lot of young people, they had the young people with a bucket brigade where they just filled the bucket at one end and of course, the guy that runs the Sutton Pistachio, all their construction and everything is an old Navy man, so that's where they came up with the bucket brigade because I asked him. But the kids liked it, they'd fill the bucket, toss all the way down, then bring it back empty and they got that, they got a lot of chips moved and we moved four or five big piles of other type of chips that went around the edges with wheelbarrows and then we planted a lot of plants, they put the drip line and system in for that. And what a great turnout, Eric Coyne showed up over there from the filming and tourism and Will Lloyd from iPorterville.com was out there and he was doing some filming and interviewing the kids and everybody and people from Sutton. He even interviewed me, I don't know what I added to his deal, but hopefully, but what a great, what a great day that was for the community of Terabella and we're going to get the Sutton people over here, once this thing is operational, hopefully we'll get them over here and give them a proclamation and some kind of a little award and stuff for, for this great deal they're doing for the community of Terabella. About three or four hundred thousand dollar project, so it's on the old railroad property right there adjacent of Old Hywood 65 and the Sutton Pistachio. To, this Wednesday or tomorrow, I'll be at Proteus in Porterville, we're going to be giving out a farm labor award to the farm labor workers, which I think is, is really neat because let's face it, farm labor and farming is what, is what runs this county. It's the big engine that makes this county move, so it's great that we're honoring these farm labor people. That's what I'm a product of, my family were the old Okies that came out here from Oklahoma and they called us fruit tramps, I think, back then and moved around the, the whole state picking fruit. Let's see what else I've got here. Friday, I'll be at the First Friday Coffee in Porterville, put on by the Chamber, that's at 6:30 over at the Theater there in Porterville. And then Saturday, we'll be going to the Historical Museum, they're having their fundraiser Saturday night, so we'll be doing that and that's about all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Sheeta.
Last week, I attended the Rural Council Supervisors Meeting in Sacramento and a couple of issues came up. One is a major concern about the United States government trying to take over all waters in the United States that includes any runoff that comes off of a gully and take it out of state jurisdiction. And there's quite a bit of resistance from all the states for the government do that because there's probably been several instances where people couldn't build homes, because water may run through their property or come close to their property and that has been an issue in some of the western states for a couple of years that the federal government has been trying to impose that type of restriction. So, we were encouraged to let our people in Washington DC understand that we are against the move to take over all the waters in the United, in the United States. Another issue came up is there's a bill in the legislature to have mandatory organic digesters for organic waste, so all the organic waste that you have, instead of going in the landfills, are supposed to go into an organic digester. Well, that's fine, but we don't have any and this law is supposed to take effect by January 17th. What it really puts a burden on is food processors in restaurants, some restaurants, because if you generate one cubic yard a week of organic material or grocery stores, you will have to send this out to an organic digester and I don't know if we have one in the valley at this point in time. One thing we covered for a long time was the Delta Bay Conservation Plan, which has been getting a lot of news of studying the delta and the future of the delta. Well, it came very apparent to me that the Delta Bay Conservation Plan is not about the health of the delta, it's really about justifying the twin tunnels that the governor has proposed. And I don't think there's, we have 34 counties in our organization, I don't think there's one county that's in favor of the twin tunnels diverting water out of the delta. So, all these millions of dollars that are being spent on this study and the EIR is, I think it's just released, is just to justify those twin tunnels or the, what used to be called the peripheral canal that has very little public support. So, that's my report for today.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, just to go over a couple of events that are happening this week that are important, I don't know if the principal at Tulare Union High School, who was an assistant principal when I was there, understands my basketball skills because she invited me to participate and play in a fundraising event that they're having on Thursday, May 1st and someone mentioned donkeys as a part of the event and so I, I don't know where I fit into that, but it should be interesting to see.
You, you left that way too wide open.
I did it intentionally Supervisor. And then on Friday, Early Mart Middle School will be having their annual career day. They do a wonderful job with that event and it really does expose the youth in Early Mart to the variety of careers that are out there for their choice as they go off to high school in Delano, which is another issue that we need to work on and we have been working on with the Early Mart School District. And then lastly, there is a fundraising event for the Tulare Athletic Boxing Club this Saturday at 6:00 PM at the home of Jimmy and Tammy Valoff. They do a great job raising money for that organization and they do a fantastic job. They've expanded their services into a family resource center and they're really doing a great job. They were here last week talking about some of their literacy offerings and really are very proud of those folks for what they do and I look forward to supporting them at that event. That's all I have.
Thank you. I just have a few things, last night, my wife and I attended a art show for the sexual assault victims here in Tulare County and very, very touching event. If you know someone who's been affected by this, it's a good art show to go to. The next couple of days between now and Thursday, it'll be open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Cafe 210 here in Visalia and there, there's an overall message of hope there of survivors and for survivors, so if you've not seen it, it's very touching, I would encourage you to go. Next week, May 5th begins the, I'll call it the walk off and I'm going to look at Rhonda over here, Rhonda, is it too late to register?
No, it's not too late.
Not too late to register, so if you're a county employee, please go online and you can register. Our, our team up here is, and in our office is named the Red Hot Chili Steppers and so we, we challenge every other team in the county. We, we were number two last year, we have dedicated ourselves to be team number one this year, we will walk further and more steps than anybody at, on average, you know, there's departments out there with probably 100 team members, the 15 of us are not going to beat you 100, but when you average it out, we, we plan on, on take being team number one this year. So, there's, there's the challenge to you, if you've not signed up, go out, I got my pedometer this morning in, in my mailbox and so starting May 5th, now don't, I would encourage you to start May 5th, we're going to start this week getting ready. So, you can, you can start May 5th, put your pedometer on and see how you do. Also, next week, May 8th, Thursday evening begins the, at 6:00 PM at the Fox Theater, there will be the Step Up Challenge Awards. We have right at 20 junior high and high schools here in Tulare County that have been doing service projects, some of you, if you've noticed the newspapers, Valley Voice times Delta, the Tulare Advanced Register, the Mission Oak School did a large project where they gleaned fruit and they picked over 20,000 pounds of fruit and gave it to Food Link. That was part of their service project they did for the Step Up Challenge Awards, so as we speak, there's a team of individuals in a sequestered, in a private place, they're grading the reports that were received by the schools and then the winners of that will be acknowledged May 8th at the Fox Theater. It's kind of like a red carpet event, the Academy Awards, nobody really knows who wins until the, the envelope is opened up, it's not gold and it's just plain white envelope because we can't afford gold, but it, it's a really great event for the kids. We expect to have about 1,000 people in attendance, so if you are looking for something to do next Thursday night, come on over to the Fox Theater, it'll be a great event. That's all I have and next up, we have on number two, will be a adopting a resolution proclaim, well claiming the month of May 2014 as Mental Health Awareness Month. We will turn the time over to Supervisor Vanderpool, we'd like to invite Irma to come up and to, do you have a little presentation you'd like to make Irma?
Irma, either microphone work and go ahead and you can go ahead and make your remarks or do your presentation and we'll, you'll join me in the while for the proclamation.
Yes, basically, I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors again for acknowledging May as Mental Health Awareness Month. We know that this is an issue that Tulare County works not only during the month of May, but throughout the year to bring awareness because we know mental health is such an important part of everyone's life to produce productive citizens and happy citizens Tulare County, so we acknowledge the day-to-day that you're proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. So, thank you very much and I will bring forward a couple of members from the no stigma rules to come with me and receive the proclamation.
All right, thank you for coming today and for receiving this proclamation, you know, like you said, mental health awareness is important every month, every day of the year, but we take this specific month of May to make sure that we make extra special efforts to spread awareness about mental health and mental health issues in our county. So, this is a proclamation from the Tulare County Board of Supervisors proclaiming May 2014 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tulare County. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being and can affect all areas of a person's life, including school, home and work. And whereas, an estimated 26.2% of Americans ages 18 and older, about 1 in 4 adults suffer from a diagnosable mental health disorder in a given year. An estimated 2/3 of adults and young people with mental health problems go without the help that they need. Whereas, 10% of children and adolescents in the US suffer from serious emotional and mental disorders. About 50% of the students ages 14 and older with a mental health disorder drop out of high school, the highest dropout rate of any disability group. Whereas, children of mothers who go untreated for perinatal depression are at greater risk for abuse and neglect and are more likely to have an adversarial relationship with their parent. And whereas, symptoms are often overlooked and heavily stigmatized because new and expected mothers suffering from perinatal depression often feel confused, ashamed and isolated. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization and citizen bears the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness. And whereas, with treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can walk upon a path of wellness and recovery and lead full productive lives. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tulare County and call upon the citizens, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Tulare County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. Signed by Alan Sheeta, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley and Mike Ennis. Thank you very much, I really appreciate you being here and it's really been a pleasure on my part to serve on the Mental Health Board for over six years, I really enjoy that and it's really helped to enhance my awareness of mental health issues and I really do feel like I'm a part of a community and a team that I can help in improving awareness and services that we provide to the mentally ill. So, thank you so much for what you do and thank you to all the volunteers and mental health board members that I serve with because they do a fantastic job along with our mental health staff here in Tulare County, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next item up on our agenda today is one of the most exciting things we get to do each year as a Board of Supervisors, there's, there's a few meetings we look.
That's in action, right?
Oh.
I move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Cast your votes, it's unanimous Supervisor Worthley being absent. For the record Supervisor Worthley is in Washington DC today, visiting with our Tulare County Association of Governments on transportation issues. Okay, back to my other memorized script. This is one of the most exciting times we have each year, there's a few meetings that we look forward to every year, the employee recognitions and then the youth calendars that the Farm Bureau does, those are two really memorable things that, that I know I look forward to each year and we are excited to present the service awards today. Rhonda, we will turn the time over to you.
Chairman Cox and members of the Board, CAO Rousseau and our council and our fellow employees. Today, I'm honored to be able to continue with our program of recognizing employees for their long service to this county. The Service Award Program recognizes employees who have completed 10 years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. Awards for employees who have completed those 10 years of service will be presented in the employees departments. Today, it's noteworthy to mention that the Board is recognizing employees during the month of April, which is National County Government Month. We honor these employees for their loyalty, their hard work, their compassion and service ethic to their communities and to their citizens. As I read a little bit about each awardee, you will hear that many are also good Samaritans in their lives and volunteer in their church, school activities, for service clubs and are very active in their own communities. Beginning with 15 years of service and for completion of each five years of additional service, the awards are presented annually by your Board. Fellow employees, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Some of the awards are a little fragile and have carrying boxes and you can get those after the ceremony, just come up to see the staff. Also, my disclaimer is that if I mispronounce your name, I apologize profusely and, and you can correct me after the ceremony, thank you. We'll begin with District 1 with Supervisor Alan Sheeta and we'd like to call forth Deborah Perez. Deborah is a nutrition assistant 2, is receiving her 15 years of service and works for the Health and Human Services Agency. Besides working for Tulare County full-time, she has also worked part-time with Starbucks since September of 2011. She enjoys the luxuries of being a newfound grandmother for baby Jason, congratulations. Bonnie Queros. Bonnie is a client advocate at Health and Human Services Agency and has receiving her 15 years of service awards. She started off as a site manager, worked her way up as a supervisor and then became program coordinator. She's received Employee of the Month and through her church, she's been recognized for nine years of service. She is starting a new adventure as being an elder and dependent adult advocate, congratulations, Bonnie. Susanna Renteria. Susanna is a registered nurse with Health and Human Services Agency, receiving her 15 years. She's been a nurse for 41 years and has never regretted her career choice. She has been an Employee of the Month for three times and the joy of her life is her six grandchildren, congratulations. Nancy Aguilar, Program Specialist 2 with CalWorks, is receiving 25 years of service award. She started off, she says, picking tomatoes, is doing field work and then came to the county in 1988. She enjoys camping, movies and reading, is the grandparent of six and she's been married for 38 years with two sons, congratulations. Rita Woodard, Auditor Controller, Treasure Tax Collector, receiving her 25 years of service award. Rita has grandchildren, she didn't say how many, she serves in, okay, she's giving me the two sign, she serves in Kiwanis and would anyone on the Board or CAO like to say anything more about Rita as a department head?
No, I, I just thank Rita for her service and enjoy working with you and the various conferences that you pull me to to go speak at, enjoy working with you and helping as much as I can and thank you for the work that you do in the Auditor Controller's Office. I know that it's very demanding, but we appreciate all that you do and your involvement in the community sure makes a difference too, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, I just want to say, can I say, we accept Phil's challenge as the winners of last year's race. Do you want to put some money on it? I'll put a hundred dollars down for my favorite charity.
Is, is there a sheriff in the house?
Tricia Wofford. Tricia is a legal office assistant 3 with the District Attorney's Office and has receiving her 35 years of service today. And within those 35 years with Tulare County, she's worked with County Clerk's Office, personnel, Ad Commissioner and the District Attorney Office. She enjoys horseback riding and she's received several certificates from training and as a Victims Compensation Government Control Board in Sacramento, congratulations Tricia. And that concludes District 1. District 2 Supervisor Pete Vanderpool. Sandy Miller. Sandy is receiving her 15 years of service and is a Workforce Development Program Coordinator with the Workforce Investment Board Administration. She's a graduate of Leadership Tulare, she's a Certified Toast Master and is the current Commissioner of the City of Tulare Planning Commission.
That was my fault.
Thank you so much, congratulations. Susanna Sandoval. We'll get her award to her with 15 years, she is a retiree with the Health and Human Services Agency. Angela Segala. Angela is a Self-Sufficiency Counselor 3 with 15 years of service. She attended Tulare Union High School, she loves to read and watch her children play sports and she is always willing to help and volunteers to do other assignments. Rosario Garabo, Community Health Technician, 20 years of service, Health and Human Services Agency. We'll get that award to the employee, okay. Deborah Hutchinson. Deborah has 20 years of service as a Staff Services Analyst 3 currently with Health and Human Services Agency. She has worked with Cooperative Extension before transferring to HHSA. At HHSA, she's been with the Human Resources, Human Resources slash Personnel Department and is currently with Mental Health. Her supervisor says Debbie is always willing to accept new responsibilities and very skillful with the computer. Donna Jones. Donna has 35 years of service with the county as an Office Assistant 3 with Health and Human Services Agency. She enjoys crafting and has grandkids, but didn't tell us how many grandchildren that she has. Congratulations to Donna. Bucks for them. And that concludes District 2. District 3 Supervisor Chairman Phil Cox. Carrie Amador. Carrie is a Staff Services Analyst 2 with Health and Human Services and is receiving 15 years of service award today. She worked at the Accounting Department or Division of Child Support before going to Health and Human Services Agency. She walks half marathons, so we hope that she will be joining a team in our walking challenge next week, congratulations. Alberto Benuellos, Program Specialist 2 with CalWorks in the Health and Human Services Agency is receiving 15 years of service. He's currently a project lead with the Healthcare Reform. He's received his bachelor's degree in Business Administration next month in May and will be pursuing his master's degree in Public Administration from Arkansas State University. His supervisor says Albert is a quick-witted person that usually provides much laughter to the workplace, for this, we are thankful to have him on our team, congratulations. Congratulations. Lynette Bartlett. Lynette is a Self-Sufficiency Resource Specialist, receiving fifteen years of service. Her supervisor says Lynette has spent a majority of her career with the county in the Hearings Unit. She is a valued employee of that unit. Congratulations. Lorena Cruzes, Health Program Assistant, fifteen years of service with the Health and Human Services Agency. Lorena has attended the Business Careers Training Center, has gone back and got her Medical Assistant Certificate, and is completing classes to get her Human Services Social Work AA Degree. Her supervisor, Suzie McAluso, says of Lorena, she sets a high personnel work standard and has been an excellent role model for new staff members. Congratulations. Dorothy Fiero. We will be getting Dorothy's award to her. She's receiving fifteen years as a Medical Assistant at Health and Human Services. Tana Goluski. Office Assistant Four, Health and Human Services Agency. Tana actually began with the county as a county volunteer. She was hired as extra help and then began working in the Mental Health Department. She's completed Supervisory Academy, enjoys scrapbooking and travel, and is a proud new grandparent. Anna Isaias, Victim Witness Worker Two, from the District Attorney's Office. Anna has worked in several positions with the county, having worked as a Probation Correctional Officer, then through the CWS Group Home Unit as Social Worker, and then as a CWS Investigator, and finally with District Attorney as a Victims Advocate. She has a degree in Criminology. She was the 2014 Employee of the Year for the DA's Office. She says it is such a blessing to work in the DA's Office and help victims in need. Congratulations. Margaret Jeremio. Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant Three. Margaret's receiving fifteen years of Service Award. She, too, started as extra help before becoming a permanent employee in nineteen ninety-eight. She enjoys working in her garden, home improvements, and sporting events. It is a blessing to live and laugh with my grandchildren, is what she states. Congratulations. Michelle Jones. Legal Office Assistant Three, is receiving fifteen years of service in the District Attorney's Office. She's been with the Victims Unit for fourteen years and is now in the Juvenile Division. She's attended the County Supervisory Training Program and will be getting her Certificate of Completion, received it in November of 2013. She, Michelle, has been a team player in our unit, assisting her coworkers and myself. Glad to have her on our team, says her supervisor. Lanny Lewis. Lanny is retired, was a Self-Sufficiency Resource Specialist for fifteen years with the county. He enjoys camping, fishing, playing with his six grandchildren, and he says, "I have no supervisor. I'm retired," and is very happy. Congratulations. Gloria Leboa. Gloria is also retired, with fifteen years of service to Tulare County as a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant Two. She began working with Kingsview Mental Health when the county took over in nineteen eighty-seven. She retired in March of this year, has two grandchildren, Blake and Paige. Congratulations. Reyna Lopez. Reyna is a Community Health Technician with Health and Human Services, with fifteen years of service. Reyna loves to work out, shares her cooking skills with her family, friends, and coworkers, and the joy of her life is a twenty-year-old daughter who is a pre-med student and an eighteen-year-old son who is studying business marketing, and she also has a thirteen-year-old daughter with straight Aids. Congratulations. Eric Martin. Employee Employer Relations Specialist with the Human Resources Department, with fifteen years of service today. He started in Health and Human Services as a Personnel Officer and promoted and transferred to the Employee Relations Specialist in Human Resources. He enjoys youth soccer and golf. He's married for twenty-seven years with two children, has a son who just completed his first year of college, and a daughter which is a senior in high school. And I would just like to say, besides being competitive in youth soccer and golf, he's also a tenacious table ping-pong player at our HRD events. Congratulations, Eric. Michelle Medina. Michelle is receiving fifteen years today with a Self-Sufficiency Counselor Three at Health and Human Services Agency. Employment and training, serving the community is my passion, is what Michelle states. She has twenty years with what was Private Industry Council, JTPA, and is now working in Health and Human Services. She loves to travel, reads, and spends time with her grandsons. Congratulations. Alyssa Montoya. Alyssa is a County Financial Technician Two with the Treasurer Auditor's Department. She has received the department's Shining Star Certificate. She's been nominated for Employee of the Year, enjoys hiking in the mountains, making hats for the Hats for Hope Cancer Program. Congratulations, Alyssa. Viani Moreno. Child Welfare Services Supervisor, fifteen years of service. Viani has a BA in Sociology from UC Davis. She's received five Employee Recognition Awards during her employment with us. Her supervisor says Viani is a conscientious supervisor who looks for ways to strengthen the knowledge and skills of her staff. Congratulations, Viani. Maria Rogers. Maria is retired, has fifteen years of service as an Office Assistant Four with Health and Human Services Agency. She actually worked for the county from nineteen seventy-six to ninety-six, then she returned to us from nineteen ninety-eight to 2013. She's returning to California to receive her award today, and she comes back to visit her family and former coworkers. She lives in Oregon with her husband of forty-two years. Congratulations. Guadalupe Romo. Guadalupe is a Self-Sufficiency Supervisor with fifteen years of service at the Health and Human Services Agency, and she is a proud mother of two wonderful boys. Congratulations. Mary Sanchez. Mary is a Laboratory Lab Assistant Two with Health and Human Services Agency for fifteen years. She enjoys baking, volunteering at health fairs, and volunteering with her church. Congratulations, Mary. Martha Molina. Martha is a Social Services Worker Two, receiving twenty years Service Award today. She has an AA Degree in Health Services. She's continuing education at Fresno Pacific University, where she received her Bachelor's Degree in Organizational Leadership, and she enjoys scrapbooking. Congratulations, Martha. And that concludes our District Three awardees. District Four. Supervisor Mike Ennis will present for Supervisor Steve Worthley. Angelica Arroyo. Angelica is a Program Specialist Two with CalWorks and has fifteen years of service. She's looking forward to another fifteen years of service, is what she says. Congratulations. Christina Cabrera. Office Assistant Four, fifteen years of service with Health and Human Services. Her supervisor, Diana Fisher, states Christina has worked in many departments in Health and Human Services. She is multi-skilled and appreciated by staff and management. Congratulations. Barbara Gomes. Barbara is retired, is a Self-Sufficiency Resource Specialist, was with the Health and Human Services Agency for twenty years of service. She retired in December of this year. She has eleven grandchildren and one other on the way in August of this year, and has been married fifty years. During employment, she received four Employee of the Month Plaques. Congratulations also on your retirement. District Five. Mary Hunt. Self-Sufficiency Supervisor, fifteen years of service, and your supervisor, Mike Ennis, will present. Her hobby or interests include working in the yard. In her case, it's the side of a mountain since she lives in Camp Nelson. She's been married forty-five years, has two children and five grandchildren, and her oldest granddaughter is graduating from UC Santa Barbara in June. Angelita Morales. Angelita is receiving fifteen years of service and is a Self-Sufficiency Supervisor. She loves to crochet, camping, and spending time with family. She's the mother of five great children and three wonderful grandchildren. Her supervisor says Angie possesses an excellent work ethic and is a positive role model to the unit she supervises and to the entire office. Congratulations, Angelita. Chi Zhang. Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant Two, fifteen years of service with Tulare County. He enjoys technology, camping, and fishing. His supervisor says Chi is an outstanding employee, he is dedicated to his job, and is a great team player. Proud to have him on board. Congratulations. Linda Hazelwood. Linda is a Self-Sufficiency Counselor Two with twenty years of service at Health and Human Services. She enjoys reading, writing, music, and is a published poetess. She will have a grandson, will be four in May, the love of her life, and her daughter teaches Social Studies at Granite High School. Congratulations. Janet Jones. Janet is a Self-Sufficiency Supervisor with twenty years of services with our HHSA Agency. She loves to travel and spend time in the mountains at Camp Nelson. She is the grandmother of four adorable grandchildren, and her supervisor says, "I am grateful that Janet willingly guides new and experienced staff by freely sharing her knowledge and experience." Congratulations, Janet. Chairman Cox, that concludes our Service Awards for this year. I would like to acknowledge, besides our awardees, I'd like to acknowledge Judy Weems, our Department Secretary, and Desiree Schalkford, who worked and coordinated our Service Awards this year.
Thank you. I'd like to bring back the Board for some comments. Supervisor Ennis?
Well, thanks again for everybody, for all the work you do on a daily basis. You are Tulare County, you are the people that make this county run, and we appreciate all the service you give us every year, and I think we're the winners of this deal, having great people like you as employees. So, thank you so much for what you do on a daily basis and making Tulare County look good. Thank you.
I also want to thank you for your years of service and being the backbone of our county. And I looked at the service list last week and this week, there are so many of you with fifteen years. So, we expect many more years of service, and what that means is many of you will be in the top leadership positions in this county within the next five years. So, I really want to congratulate you. I think we have a great group of people who have a different attitude than we may have had ten years ago, that we have a can-do attitude and not a no attitude. So, thank you very much for all your years.
I just really want to echo my colleagues' comments, and thank you so much for your service and what you do each and every day. You know, you really are the face of this county, and this organization is only as good as the people we have working for it, and we are very fortunate to have great people that work for Tulare County and really do provide excellent service. You know, it's amazing to hear the compliments that I am hearing out in public from constituents of mine who I work with and I do business with and help in many different ways, and they have nothing but good to say about their experiences with Tulare County or Tulare County employees. And I think that's fantastic. It says so much about this organization, and I want you to know as employees that we appreciate you, whether you've worked here for a one year, or fifteen years, or in some cases, thirty-five years, which is a great number because that's longer than I've been alive, and I think it's great to be able to say that. But I really do appreciate everything that you do, your commitment to service and your commitment to Tulare County, and you are the ones that are helping to make Tulare County a better and safer place, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
I also want to thank Judy, Desiree. You guys have done a wonderful job. Each year as I've been here, things move like clockwork, and it's really appreciated. Thank you so much for your service. I think you did a great job this year. They don't trust my additions anymore, so Ron just started adding up the years of service for me. Today, we honored folks with a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five years of service. Last week and this week combined is one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-five years, a little bit longer than Supervisor Ennis has been alive. Just a little. And that's okay. He's told me I can kid him about his age, and he kids me about my weight, so that's all right.
We share the same birthday, so.
It's a different year.
Different mothers, too. See, you ought to just spend a day around here, and it's really a lot of fun. You know, I noticed, I wrote a couple things down. First, I'm going to challenge Eric Martin to a game of table tennis ping-pong. I was the fourteen-year-old champion, so we'll see if any of those skills stuck around for forty-plus years after that. And also, the very young grandparents, I am just, you know, impressed with the number of grandparents. You know, I often say, "I do what I do because of my children and grandchildren," and it's so great to hear about you folks talking about your children, your grandchildren, and how much they mean to you, because that's really why I think we're all doing what we do, is to give them a future, to give them hope. Barbara, fifty years of marriage, that's eleven grandkids. I hadn't heard anyone so far that had as many grandchildren as I did. Eleven matches my eleven, so I think that's great, but your one on the way beats me, so. Congratulations. Congratulations. But thank you for all your many years of service. Again, I think we're in it for the right reason. We just see a wonderful attitude as we travel throughout the county, going to the different departments. It's so exciting. I was over in Tulare yesterday in the Hillman Building and just to see some folks, to surprise some folks actually in their offices there, was a really, really a pleasure to get to see you where you're working and to see your work environment and how happy you are there. So, thank you again for all your many years of service. We so much appreciate that. So, thank you. If we could ask you to stay seated for just a couple more minutes. We will take a short break so that you, because we know you can't wait to get back to work. We would like to just take care of two quick items of business. We'll open up our public comment period. If there's anyone wishing to speak during the public comment period, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak during public comment period on an item that's not on today's agenda? Yes. Yes, either microphone will work.
Thank you. I was a little bit late. My name is Elaine Heath and I am with the Tulare County Mental Health Speakers Bureau. I just wanted, oh, hi, you read? Hi. I was supposed to be here. I ended up going to the corner and I was like, oh no, where am I supposed to go? So, I went driving around and around. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you so much for opening up this month and allowing us to be able to share our stories. We're absolutely delighted for the opportunity and looking forward to the positive transition and super excited. So, if any of you have a supervisor that you could speak with, we'd love to do a panel for you and be able to present. We want to assure you that there is absolute wonderful information that will really benefit you, your employers, as well as your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we typically don't applaud the public comment period, but that was. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment period? The next item of business I'd like to take care of before we release you is our consent calendar. Is there any consent calendar items that need to be pulled by the board for separate consideration? We do have one clarification on item number seventeen. Failed to mention that on the consent calendar, this is regarding amendment to an agreement to act as a claims processing agent for Medi-Cal for a school district in regard to Sunnyside Union Elementary School. That's a clarification for the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other corrections, I make that correction to item number seventeen and move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second, Ted. Motion by Vanderpool, second by Ennis. Please cast your vote. Votes are unanimous. Supervisor Worley being in Washington DC today. Okay, that concludes our consent counter item. And we will take a two-minute break so all you fine folks can go back to work. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, we are back in session. I'm going to take one more item out of order, item number eight. I understand Resource Management Agency would like to have that item continued to May thirteenth. We are going to open the public hearing. Anybody here wishing to address the board on item number eight, which is a request from Resource Management Agency to consider improved posted fee adjustments to the planning and development fee schedule? Anyone here to speak to that, please step forward now. The public hearing is open and it will remain open through our May thirteenth continuation date. Seeing none, public hearing is still open. We'll consider a motion to continue this item to May thirteenth.
I move to continue this item to May thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
Second.
Moved by Ennis, second by Sheeda. Cast your votes. Unanimous. Supervisor Worley being in Washington DC today. Okay, our next item up is a public hearing, emphasis being on hearing in regards to an appeal filed by Monique P. Yang to uphold the Resource Management Agency Notice of Decision for Violation of Medical Marijuana Ordinance six dash two-one dash one-four-zero DNI located at seventy-four South Maston Street in Porterville, California, APN number two-five-nine zero-nine-two-zero-zero-eight. This is a hearing to consider the notice and statement of decision dated January twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, and the assessment of abatement costing an amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents against Monique P. Yang for violations of the Tulare County Ordinance Code pertaining to the cultivation of medical marijuana. Hearing is being held on today's date, April twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, at nine fifty-seven AM at twenty-eight hundred South Windy Boulevard, Visalia, California, nine-three-two-nine-one, and is at the request of Monique P. Yang under the Tulare County Ordinance Code, Section one-six-five. The hearing is open to the public. However, if any member of the public disrupts the hearing, he or she will be asked to leave. And I have a question for both our Resource Management Agency and Monique P. Yang. Does either party wish to exclude witnesses from the hearing?
This is Mike Spata, RMA. Mr. Chairman, no, sir.
No. Ms. Yang, do you wish to exclude any witnesses? Please come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to respond?
Ms. Bell's laying. Our county counsel will answer that.
Ms. Yang?
Yes.
You have the right to ask that any witnesses to the matter before the board step out of the board chamber so that they cannot hear what other witnesses testify to before they testify.
Are you going to have witnesses today?
No.
Okay, then. And are you going to have witnesses today?
Yes.
Mr. Spata, you will. And identify your witnesses, please.
Witnesses will be Code Compliance Officer Michael Grove and Code Compliance Officer Maria Mendoza. And I will make some opening statements.
So, you want to have them sit outside during this hearing?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? Okay.
Ms. Yang, it's okay with you if both of these people stay in while they testify and while you make your presentation?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Then, no, witnesses will be excluded. I have one more statement to read through here. "The board shall hear all pertinent evidence offered by all interested persons. The technical rules of evidence shall not be applicable to the hearing, although the board reserves the right to limit evidence to what is relevant to the issues to be decided at this hearing. Each side shall have the right to call and examine witnesses, to introduce exhibits, to cross-examine opposing witnesses on any matter relevant to the issues on appeal, even though the matter was not covered in the direct examination, to impeach any witness regardless of which party first called him to testify and to rebut the evidence against him. If a party does not testify on his or own behalf, he or she may be called and examined as if under cross-examination. Any exhibits offered by a party should be given to the clerk." Michelle, would you raise your hand, please? Any exhibits would be given to Michelle, our clerk. All persons giving evidence are deemed to be testifying under oath. The parties shall remain civil to each other and any witnesses at all time. As a party filing the appeal, Ms. Yang, you shall be allowed to testify and call any witnesses. Following the presentation of your evidence, the county shall then be allowed to present its evidence. Ms. Yang will then be allowed to rebut, or a rebuttal statement after the county presents its evidence. Pursuant to Tulare County Ordinance one-sixty-five D, the board of supervisors will only consider the issues raised in the notice of appeal as the basis for appeal, and those questions are as follows. What first, was Ms. Yang provided sufficient notice to allow her voluntary, to voluntarily abate the nuisance existing on her property prior to the abatement by the county employees on September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen? And second, was Ms. Yang responsible for the nuisance that existed on her property, although she was not living there at the time the nuisance existed? So, Ms. Yang, are there any additional issues that you would like the board to consider at the time? The two issues we have, did you receive sufficient notice? And were you responsible for the nuisance? Are there any additional issues that you would like to have us consider?
I have a statement that I would like to read. Is that okay?
Okay, then, at this time, before you read your statement, is there any questions before we begin? Because I think that will allow you to do your statement then. Any questions, Mr. Spata?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Yang, then you can now make your statement or present your evidence.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Recently, I had a chance to talk to a Resource Management Agency personnel, Mr. Spata, and he said he was given the powers from you guys to negotiate a deal with me instead of me coming here to plead my case before you because it is such a small amount. I wanted to thank Mr. Spata for his courteous communication with me. He did offer me a deal of paying two hundred dollars instead of the full amount of seventeen hundred dollars or so. After careful examining of the situation, I decided to decline his offer. As much as I dislike confrontations, I know I need to come before you for the principle of it. As you know, I'm the property owner of seventy-four South Maston in Porterville. I am not here to deny that violations had not taken place at the property. I understand that my ex-tenants had multiple violations as it was brought to my attention by Resource Management Agency. That much I can agree on. What I do not agree on is being held responsible for something that was caused by other people and for being misled by the ten days letter. As a landlord, all I know is that my property should be in safe, clean, and in good repair for tenants and to make sure rent is paid every month. If something is broken and needs replacement or repair, the tenants calls me and I send in a repair person to service it. If I hear from neighbors and law enforcement agencies that violations are exhibiting or happening at my rental, I expect my local law enforcement agency to take care of it. If it is something that needs my intervention, I will make sure to follow up and see to it that the tenants abide by the law or be evicted according to the fair housing and rent tenants' rights. I did not, however, feel that it was my responsibility to investigate whether the tenants were in violations of laws on the property and to report them. I thought that that was the law enforcement's job. Of course, if I knew something was going on, I would definitely report it. But for lack of a better word, I would not spy on them. I didn't have the time. I'm a full-time working with two children and going to school full-time. And I'm very, you know, stressed for times. The second disagreement I have is Resource Management Agency ten days letter. Although I think I understand the validity of the letter, I felt it was unfair. This letter is misleading and gives Resource Management Agency too much power, in my opinion. The reason I say this is because how did Resource Management Agency determine which plot to abate within the ten days or after the ten days deadline? There were multiple people at the hearing at Resource Management Agency office back in January that had their plots abated between day three to day nine. I felt that this letter did not allow for uniformity and that it could lead to discrimination. If they liked certain people or if they knew the family, do they allow the full ten days? I know of a person who were giving the same ten-day letters. It was allowed the whole ten days plus some more. The letter has a clause that if they felt it was imminent danger to the public health and safety, that they could go in any time between the ten days. I don't know about other situations, but with my situation, Resource Management Agency representative went to their home and spoke to the tenants and told them they have ten days to clear out their plots, plants. But then turned around and raided their property not even twenty-four hours later. If it was such imminent danger, why was it not specified to the tenants that day when he visited them so the tenants could be in compliance within the allowed time? I wonder if it was purposely done this way so that a fine can be imposed? I don't know. With any business that I'm aware of, consequences are usually issued, issued for after the deadline, not before the deadline. In conclusion, I'm just pleading for no fault in this case in that you remove the total fine that was imposed upon me by Resource Management Agency. I would like to request that you take a look at that ten days letter when you have the chance and see what you think. I don't know Resource Management Agency's process, but for the regular layman person such as myself, the current ten days letter is confusing and misleading. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. Mr. Spata, do you have any questions for Ms. Yang?
I don't have any specific questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have any questions? Okay, thank you. At this time then, we will have Mr. Spata make his presentation?
Yes.
And then Ms. Yang, you will be allowed to ask him questions after that, okay? So, he's going to give a presentation and then you can ask him questions. Mr. Spata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're sworn.
Am I deemed sworn or?
You're deemed sworn.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, counsel, good morning, Mike Spata, RMA. This morning, I will respectfully present to you RMA's presentation with respect to the appeal. I will be very brief. Following me will be Code Compliance Officer Michael Grove and Code Compliance Officer Maria Mendoza, who will have firsthand knowledge with respect to the matters at hand. Very briefly, I will just summarize the appeal to begin with. Based upon the testimony that you have heard today by the appellant, there is an acknowledgement and admission that the violations had occurred. This supplements the notice of decision, which is exhibit five in your packet, indicating that the violations of Tulare County ordinance, specifically with regard to the medical marijuana ordinance and the public nuisance ordinance, had been violated. The major issue then before you is the amount of notice, the proverbial ten-day notice. And that is exhibit two before you. And although I will not be extensive, I think it's important for me just to take a moment to read a relevant paragraph of the notice. It's exhibit five. It's on page two. It is in the paragraph entitled Notice of Abatement Warrant and Other Recourse. And other recourse, that is in capital letters, it is in bold, and it is underlined. It begins, notwithstanding the above, that means notwithstanding the ten-day notice above, you are hereby notified, that is in cap and in bold, that if county determines that the conditions on your property constitute either a nuisance per se or an imminent threat to the public health and safety, the county may seek a civil abatement order permitting entry onto the property by RMA employees and sheriff's officers to abate the violation at any time, either before or after the date of the hearing to show cause and/or appeal. Subsequently, an inspection warrant and order of entry was obtained by the Superior Court. That is exhibit three in your packet. As the testimony will confirm today by both Code Compliance Officers, that twenty-four-hour notice was duly served on September sixteenth before the actual abatement had occurred. On the strength of those written exhibits and on the basis of the oral testimony that is in the notice of decision as well as you will hear today, proper legal procedure was followed with regard to the abatement of the illegal marijuana, notwithstanding the fact that the ten days was not actually. fact that the 10 days was not actually given. Now let's turn to the abatement costs. It should be very clear, and this is in Exhibit Five, no fines and penalties were assessed, no administrative costs were assessed. There could have been substantial fines and penalties and substantial costs assessed. The only costs that were assessed in this particular case were the cost to obtain the warrant, which were $1,700 and which are clearly specified in Exhibit Five. Notwithstanding the evidence before you, notwithstanding the determination that was made by the hearing officer that the violations were substantial, RMA reached out in order to try to resolve this matter before the hearing in the interest of recognizing but without conceding that there may have been a misunderstanding. And notwithstanding the fact that $1,700, plus or minus, has been assessed, RMA was willing to offer $200 in order to try to resolve this matter. Let me just turn to a final passage just to make it very clear. There was a discussion at the public hearing in front of a hearing officer, this is Exhibit Eight, the administrative hearing transcript, and on pages 64 and 65, there is a very clear discussion between the appellant, RMA staff, county council, and the hearing officer. And on those two pages, I'm not going to read them, but it is very, very clear with regard to the 10-day notice and the inspection warrant and the procedure, the proper procedure that did occur with regard to abating the nuisance without giving the full 10 days. So on the strength of that, Mr. Chairman, is respectfully submitted that the evidences is clear and conclusive that there were violations and adequate notice had been given and the proper procedure had been taken. And before I ask Mr. Chairman with your permission for the Code Compliance Officers to step forward and give their brief presentation, may I just say I would offer into evidence Exhibits One through Eight as well as the agenda item that was publicly noticed concerning this matter. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Expedite matters, may I ask a question of Mr. Spata?
Yes.
Mr. Spata, do you dispute that Ms. Yang did not actually receive the notice until the September 17th date that she testified to in this proceeding?
The notice was mailed as per our proof of service, I believe it was September 10th to the PO box, as well as it was mailed to the subject property. We do have a certified mail return receipt indicating when it was signed, that's when we would submit that she went actually to go pick it up. However, we would submit that proper noticing had occurred pursuant to the law by the mailing.
I'm not being clear in my question, forgive me. I understand that there's a certified return receipt, that actually is dated the 19th of September, but Ms. Yang has testified here today and testified in the hearing below that the date of her actual receipt of the letter was the 17th of September, and I'm just asking, is that a matter in dispute or can this board accept that as established?
I would prefer that the testimony of Mr. Grove, who had been directly involved with that, actually respond in that regard.
Okay, so that still remains in dispute then?
That concludes.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Spata? Ms. Yang, do you have any questions for him?
I did, but now I just lost it, sorry. Yeah, regarding the 10-day letters that he was saying, and I know there's this clause in there that says for imminent danger that they will come any time within that 10 days to abate the plants. Well, on the 17th of September, I went to the tenants and the tenants told me that, and they showed me a business card, and it was Mr. Grove that went and talked to them that very day and told them that they have 10 days ending on September 20th to, you know, abate the plants. But, you know, so I was assured that, okay, that was the case because they did talk to the person that was, you know, coming to the home, so, like I say in my statement, not even 24 hours later, after he visited them, he went, you know, the place was abated by them.
You'll have the opportunity to ask him that.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could supplement my information that's provided here. Based upon consideration of the matter, it seems that although we may not have any actual notice, it can be reasonably inferred that the testimony of the witness regarding the date of September 17th is accurate. Thank you.
And you wish to call Mr. Grove, the witness?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Grove, please state your full name for the record, please.
Good morning, Michael Grove, Code Compliance Officer employed by RMA with Tulare County.
Mike, could you pull the microphone up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, in August of 2013, I believe around August 19th, I received information of multiple grow sites on Maston Street, which is south of Olive Avenue, County Island, near the city of Porterville. On September the 4th of 2013, I visited the property and obtained photographs of a certain violation of an outdoor grow of a massive amount of marijuana being grown behind the residence. At that time, I also returned to the RMA office and determined that Monique Pei Yang was the property owner and identified the property. On September the 10th of 2013, a 10-day notice was mailed to the property and mailed certified mail to Ms. Yang's address with the assessor's office. On September the 11th of 2013, based on the atrocious nature of this violation, I obtained an inspection abatement warrant from the Honorable Judge Paul Vortman. And on September the 16th of 2013, I personally served this 24-hour notice of intent to serve that warrant at the property of 74 South Maston and made contact with a tenant by the name of, he called himself Boon. That time, I presented that to him, informed him that I had a warrant for the property that I would be returning no later than, after 24 hours to serve that warrant. That was on September the 16th of 2013. Along with me at that time was my partner, Code Compliance Officer Maria Mendoza, who also witnessed that transaction. On September the 19th of 2013, I proceeded to the property with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department, at which time they were in the process of harvesting the marijuana, they were processing it for consumption and/or distribution. I have photographs of that later. And it should be noted also that at that time, I found three physician's recommendations in the tenant's names, or which I believe were the tenant's names. The total quantity in poundage that they were recommended to have was 25 pounds, and I think you'll see in the photographs that they were far in excess of that. On January 22nd, we had an administrative hearing with Ms. Yang, which was upheld by the hearing officer, again, for costs only, which were provided in the government code. And that's provided in that notice of statement of decision. Ms. Yang filed an appeal on January 29th. On February the 10th of 2014, I revisited the property, took a photograph to show what the property looks like at that time. And the original hearing was supposed to occur on March the 25th of 2014, but got delayed till today. There were several services documents, a proof of service on the original certified mail that was sent was dated September the 10th of 2013. We did receive a return certified or signature card from Ms. Yang that was dated September the 19th of 2013. Again, administrative hearing occurred in January 22nd of 2014. And we'll move to some photographs. This is the first photograph, which was viewed from Maston Street viewing in an eastern direction. It shows, it's hard to see, but back there where the far building is, there's a wall that's built that you can't see into the backyard. This was September the 4th, 2013. The next photograph was a photograph that was taken from an adjacent property, 62 South Maston. When I look at this photograph, how I've kind of explained it to people is that it kind of reminded me of the Wizard of Oz movie where the poppies just seemed to keep going on and on and on. There's a vast quantity of marijuana here. Next photograph would depict the processing that was occurring, this was on September the 19th of 2013. Another angle of that. I also might note that upon service of the warrant on this day, there were 32 plants still in the ground. So they were in the process of abating, processing the marijuana. You can see again, as I spoke earlier, they were only supposed to have 25 total pounds, and there's much more here than that. This is the photograph that was taken on February the 10th of 2014, and it shows how the property's been cleaned up. It's what it looks like today. These are just documents of the proof of service. This one, I believe, is from September the 10th of 2013, the original proof of service for the 10-day notice. That's the return card signed by Ms. Yang on September the 19th, 2013, and this is a proof of service of the agenda packet for the hearing before the board. This time, I would call up Code Compliance Officer Maria Mendoza, who can state that she was there present on the day, on September the 16th of 2013, when I served the 24-hour notice.
Mr. Grove, before you leave, Ms. Yang, do you have any questions for Mr. Grove?
Yes, I do have one. Is it correct that you say you got a warrant from the judge on September 16th?
No, I got the warrant on September 11th of 2013.
Okay, and then you visited the home on September 17th, correct?
No, I visited the home on September 16th of 2013.
Okay, so you visited. So on that day that when you visited the tenants on the 16th, how come you didn't tell them that, you know, this is an imminent danger and it needs to be removed like now instead of telling them, making them believe that they have 10 days?
I didn't tell them that they had 10 days. What I told them was, is that I was intending to serve warrant on that property, and they had 24 hours after that time that I would be returning with the warrant. The warrant's good for 14 days by law. I obtained the warrant on the 11th, so I had 14 days from that point of time to serve it.
Right, I'm just curious because, you know, if, because I went and talked to tenants and the tenants say that you came by and you assure them that they have until September 20th to abate all the plants. So, no, they're not here, and that's what they told me, and that's why I was just curious. If you already got the warrant and you know you're going to go in and, you know, abate the plants, then you should have not, you know, misled them by thinking they have 10 days.
Ms. Yang, do you have that person here to testify to that?
No, because they have since moved out of state.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to respond to that?
If you feel you need to respond, yes.
I believe that they were telling you what they wanted you to hear, that I wouldn't have told them that because that's not how, what I would say, and that if they thought that I was coming back on the 20th, that wouldn't have occurred because that would have been a Saturday and I don't work on Saturdays. Why would I even mention something like that?
You don't need to respond to that question, that's rhetorical. Did you have any other questions for Mr. Grove?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need one minute, I need to excuse myself.
Okay, we're going to reassess for five minutes, we'll be back at 10:35. For the record, we do not. I'm waiting for Kathleen Bell Swain. If she's in the restroom, don't go in there. Got it. Okay, we are back in open session now, we'll continue the hearing. Our next witness, would you please state your name and title for the record?
Hi, my name is Maria Mendoza, my title is Code Compliance Officer for Resource Management Agency.
Okay, you have a statement?
Yes, I do. For the record, I would like to make a statement based on what I witnessed on September 16, 2013. Mike Grove and I drove out to the site, we visited the property on Maston Street, and we hand-delivered, well, Mike hand-delivered to the tenant at that time a warrant notice that was to be served within 24 hours. He specifically told the tenant that there would be a warrant served on that property due to the marijuana growth that was out there in the backyard.
Ms. Yang, do you have any questions for her?
May I add that the tenants do not speak English, and, you know, if, whatever they tell them, they do not understand what they're saying. And the only thing that they showed me was the 10-day letters.
Again, the tenant is not here.
Right, and they don't speak English.
Do you have a question for her? Any questions, the board? Ms. Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I should have stated previously for the record and for Ms. Yang's benefit, pursuant to state law for quasi judicial proceedings, it is required that my office create what's called an ethical wall, that is, one part of my office is representing one party and the other part represents the other. The litigation team in my office advises Resource Management Agency in regard to these hearings. The resource team and myself are available to advise your board, so if it sounds strange that I'm asking questions, it's because I really don't know, I have been walled off from the earlier proceeding. Ms. Mendoza?
Yes.
When you were meeting with the tenants on, did you say the 16th?
The 16th.
Did they tell you that they could not understand what you were saying or indicate that they had problems with English?
No, they didn't indicate that they had any misunderstanding. Mike broke down in very simple terms, trying to communicate with them, and nodded, and he repeated stuff, he stated that he understood.
He repeated it back in English?
Yes, in English.
Is that it? Ms. Bell Swain, is that it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Spata. You know, you, when you initially brought this item forward, you gave us the dollar amount of approximately $1,700 as the cost to obtain the warrant is, was the requested amount from Mrs. Yang. Would you give me an idea that based on the current structure of Tulare County Ordinance Code, what an estimated amount of penalties would be if this board chose to go after penalties?
Yes, I can do that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vanderpoel, and I would like Mike Grove who's done the calculation to appear and recite that. Thank you.
Again, if you'd state your name for further recording.
Michael Grove, Code Compliance Officer, Tulare County. The violation, the medical marijuana ordinance violation is $1,000 a day. And the fencing violation, or most violations, are $100 a day. So how you could calculate that would be $1,000 a day for the marijuana, $100 a day for the fencing violation, and $1,100 a day. If you want to take that from September the 10th until September the 18th, the day prior to the service of the warrant, that would be $8,800.
Could you say that again? I didn't hear.
It would be $1,000 a day for the medical marijuana violation, and $100 a day for the fencing violation, which would be $1,100 a day, times eight for eight days, which would be $8,800, $8,800. And as far as violations go, or fees or fines go, that would be relatively small because of the fact that we did take it out within a short period of time.
Yes.
We had a per-plant, per-plant violation.
Yes, we did, sir, and that got modified the middle of the summer, I believe, to $1,000 a day.
Ms. Yang, do you have any questions for him in regards to that?
In regards to what he's saying about the amount of money?
The potential fine. The question was if we were to impose fines, how much would they be? And the answer was $8,800 in addition to the cost of the abatement, which was a $1,700.
What, my question is, so you're saying that the tenants that created the violations that I'm not aware of, and they are at no fault, and I, you know, it faults everything that they've done, like violations that are at the property, is gonna fall onto the landlord who has no knowledge that it was going on?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question real quick. Mr. Grove, if you'd go back to the PowerPoint presentation real quick, and just go to some of those photos real quick of both the growing, the growing marijuana, what you saw the Wizard of Oz feeling, and then it being processed. I just had a real quick question about this location. I'm not familiar with this area. Is this one home in the middle of 100 vacant acres, or is this one home in the middle of a neighborhood, and there are families, children, public places surrounding this residence?
Yes, sir, it's a residential area.
Okay.
That has multiple private residences up and down the street, on both sides of the street. There's a business that's on, a car wash that's on the, on Olive Avenue at Maston. And there's a whole general neighborhood in this area where the lots are a quarter acre in size, that type of...
Okay, so it is a residential area with residents surrounding it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Anis.
This brought to my attention, and what alerted us to this situation, was the fact that the people at the car wash were getting sick at their stomach. The stench and the skunk smell off of this was so strong, they were getting sick at their stomach, and that's what alerted us to go into this area and see. And I tell you, if I had rental property, and I do have some rental property, I don't stay away. I visit it constantly. I wanna know what's going on on that rental property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Bell Swain.
May I make an inquiry of Mr. Anis? Mr. Anis, you're apparently familiar with the property in question?
Yes.
And you had some prior information regarding possible marijuana growing on the property. Is that information such that you would not be able to make an impartial decision today based on the record? Thank you, sir.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Grove? Okay.
I have another comment, can I say?
At this time, yes, if there's no, are there any further witnesses that need to be called? There being no further witnesses, we'll allow you a final statement then?
Okay. I'm just saying that, you know, I know you said the landlord has certain responsibility. And so according to this case, so, like, if I was to go rent a property, and I'm a tenant, and I've made all these violations, and then, you know, when co-enforcer or law enforcement comes in, I could just run and have no responsibility at all, and everything falls onto the landlord?
Criminal act, and I'm going to stretch myself here, the criminal act, if there was a criminal act, would be the person who committed the criminal act. You, as a property owner, are responsible for what happens on the property you own. Is that short and sweet enough, Ms. Bell Swain?
That is, there's an additional civil question, I think. In the example that you gave, you're the renter, and you abscond and leave the landlord with penalties. The landlord has an ability to sue you for those penalties that you incurred, assuming that you had an agreement that you would use the property for legal purposes. You referenced a lease, I think, or a rental agreement that you had, and I don't see it anywhere in the, in the record. Was it a standard form?
Yes.
I've never seen one of those that doesn't have a statement in it that the lesssee or the renter is required to use the property only for legal purposes. And you mentioned not to make modifications, et cetera. So you might have had, you might have a remedy against the renters, but as a landlord, the law does say that you have a responsibility to see that your property is used legally.
So your remedy would be to go back and sue the renter for any costs you incur as a landlord? Do you have a...
So, so you, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Are you saying that, you know, resource management, co-enforcer, and law enforcement cannot, you know, find the tenants or make them responsible for what they did? And, you know, I, the landlord, have to, you know, do that job? I just don't understand. I wanna understand.
It's your responsibility as a property owner.
But if I'm not aware of it, why would I be at fault?
There are several statements running through my head right now that I've heard judges say, we are in fact acting as judges in this case. It's your responsibility to know the law. It is your responsibility as a landowner, as a homeowner, to know the law. It's not their responsibility to, to tell you what those responsibilities are. As a homeowner, as a landlord, you are required, and the responsibility falls on you to know the law.
I would like to call a witness as a last name to verify that my tenants do not speak English, and all my dealings with them are through him. So can I do that?
I'll allow that.
Okay.
You would please state your name and address for the record? Well, my name is Bi, last name Cha, and I'm the one to translate from English to Lao to the family. So they don't understand. They brought the letter to her, and then she had to, she had to read the letter and explain to Mo, to me. She doesn't speak Lao, and I have to translate in Lao to them. So that's all, in that day, because the letter said, well, they have till 20, so I just explained that you have 10 days, which will be the 20. That's why. And they talk to me like that, so I just explained to them. So I don't know.
Okay, do you have, Mr. Spata, do you have any questions?
I have...
For this witness?
I have no questions, but I would like to respond to the colloquy that occurred between yourself, counsel, and the witness.
If you have, if there's, if there's no questions for, are there any questions for the witness?
I have a question.
For the witness.
Mrs. Yang, do you speak Lao?
No, I do not.
Okay, so this man is your interpreter?
Yes, for, he interprets me for all the dealings with him.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Spata?
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Chairman. With respect to Exhibit 6, page 47 of your packet, is the monthly rental agreement as between Monique Yang and the tenants. Now I'll direct your attention to Paragraph 9, which is one sentence that I will read. It's entitled "Ordinances and Statutes of States." Quote, "Lesse shall comply with all statutes, ordinances, and requirements of all municipal, state, and federal authorities now in force, or which may hereafter be in force pertaining to the use of the premises." And that document is signed by Monique Yang.
That exhibit provided by her during the time of the prior hearing?
Yes, it is. It is in, it's in the appeal provided by Ms. Yang.
Ms. Yang, do you need to see that document?
What is it?
Do you need to see the copy of the lease agreement that he's referenced with your signature?
No.
You don't? So you acknowledge that that is a real document then?
Yeah, that was the one that I submitted with the appeal.
Thank you. Okay, do you have any other final statements?
No.
No, Mr. Spata, do you have a final statement?
Very briefly, the last slide, Mr. Chairman, is to the respectful recommendation of our MA is to deny the appeal filed by Monique P. Yang and uphold the Resource Management Agency Notice of Decision for Violation of Medical Marijuana Ordinance 6-21-1040D and I, located at 74 South Marston Street, Porterville, California, APN number 259-092-008. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring this back to the board then for deliberation. Ms. Bell Swain, you're leaning forward. You wanna say something before we begin?
I do, Mr. Chairman. If you'd give me just a minute, I will... There we go. Mr. Chairman, at this point in the hearing, based on the facts and circumstances of the entire record, it's my advice that there is significant exposure to litigation against the county actually from either party, and that I recommend that this board vote to determine if it's, if the board believes that this risk that I'm now bringing to your attention is such that you should place this item as an urgent item on your board's closed session agenda, so I can discuss it and advise you in confidence.
This board wish to make that finding?
Yes.
And adjourn to closed session, so I'll entertain a motion then.
So move.
Move by Ashida?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vanderpoel. Class your votes. Get unanimous. Supervisor Weller being absent, okay, we will adjourn to a urgent matter in closed session. We'll be right back within 10 minutes.
I thought you were still with that counter most recently, because I thought you wouldn't have left your coffee.
No, I'm not. Okay, we're back in the public session now. We have discussed this matter with our legal counsel and are ready to proceed, although I do know that each supervisor would like to make a brief statement. Supervisor Anis?
I think it's imperative that people that have rental property need to visit that real property, maybe not on a daily basis, but I would say on a monthly basis, and see what's going on. I know I do, and I normally just drive by. I get out and walk around and look at the property. And there's no law says that you can't do that as a landlord. There's no law that says you can't do that. And we actually, so, as a tenant, yeah, they have the responsibilities, but you're the landlord. You own the property. You're responsible for those people you rent that property to. And so I'll just, I'll just kinda leave it at that.
Chairman?
Supervisor Ashida?
By taking, looking at the photograph taken September 19th, 2013, very obvious to me that this property posed an immediate threat, which justified Code Compliance going in and abating. I would like to look at this further. I would like for staff to look at the maximum amount of penalties and fines that can be applied to this case, and I basically want that investigated.
Supervisor Vanderpoel? You know, I think this is very apparent in this case that, you know, we all represent different communities that have had major issues with marijuana and posing immediate threats to people within communities near schools, near churches, near other homes. Have had stories and incidents where children have jumped fences and gotten hurt, or done things to try to steal marijuana. And I think it's very important that we do hold those responsible for the illegal marijuana accountable, whether it is through a property owner, or through the actual tenant, or a responsible party themselves. And so it's, you know, I think it's absolutely imperative that we go forward, and I agree with Supervisor Ashida that we look into what needs to be done to figure out how we can go about assessing and collecting the maximum amount of fees and penalties related to this case.
Okay, that having been said, I think I've had my say. I hope this sends a message to everyone, if you are a landlord, if you do own a piece of property, you are responsible for the activities that take place on your property, not the criminal activities, but the activities that do violate our codes and ordinances in Tulare County. I would direct staff to come back to us on May 13th, which is two weeks from today's date, with the findings, illegal findings, if they can be found and made, to impose the maximum amount of fines and penalties on the property owned by Monique P. Yang. And as have been stated, those additional fines could be up to $8,800 in addition to the original cost of the abatement, which is $1,724.91. We will continue this hearing, and I'm reading this correctly, we will continue this hearing until May 13th, at which time counsel will bring back the appropriate findings if they can be made.
Chairman, are you leaving the hearing open for purposes of testimony? Are you closing that aspect of the hearing?
Well, the paper prepared by your office says the hearing is adjourned, and that it will continue the hearing to May 13th.
All right, the hearing can certainly be continued. I'm just asking if the portion of the hearing during which testimony can be introduced?
The portion where testimony is, has been heard is complete.
It's closed.
It's closed. This item will be continued until May 13th, and that is the order of the board.
I don't think, it's just direction, it's not a vote, is it, Kathleen?
Direction to me.
So will, I will entertain the motion then to continue this item. We will continue this item to May thirteenth.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Vanderpoel.
Second.
Seconded by Ennis. Vote is unanimous. Supervisor Worthy being absent. So this item is continued to May thirteenth. Okay, our next item on the agenda today is Item Number Six, A Public Hearing Request from Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Registrar of Voters to Approve the Proposed Fee Schedule. Ms. Woodard?
Good morning, Chairman Cox. Board members, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales Lang, and Will. We're here today to request for this public hearing to do some changes to the fee schedule for our offices. And we request that you conduct a public hearing for the proposed fee schedule for the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and registrar of voters and that you approve the attached fee schedule for the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and registrar of voters. There are actually two new changes to it. One change is.
Ms. Woodard, I'm sorry. Ms. Yang? Let me answer the question I'm sure you're asking right now, because we can hear you talking. This board directed our counsel to go back and see if legal findings could be made to impose the fines on you as well as the cost of the abatement. So the seventeen hundred dollars plus eight thousand eight hundred dollars. We will return May thirteenth at the same time at nine thirty and we'll hear the issue then, okay? Okay, you can contact Mr. Spata. Contact. No, he's not going to represent her. He will tell her what needs to be done. So you can contact Mr. Spata after the meeting today, okay? Yes. I'm sorry, Ms. Woodard.
That's okay.
Okay.
The board has good business to do.
And Mr. Spata, I think, is going to be available to meet you out, out in the foyer if you'd like. He's walking that way now. Okay, Ms. Woodard, please continue. Sorry.
The, the attached fee schedule has, shows adjustments to reflect, reflect current salary costs and add certain positions that were not in place when those fees were last approved. The tax collector's attached fee schedule updates titles to return to item fee to better reflect all the items it covers. It used to be non-sufficient funds for returned checks. Now we have returned credit card items and returned EFT items and all those different things are being added under one title now. And the elections schedule adds a new service for candidates on election day because of the new tablets that the board approved that we purchased. And they are now, have now been received. And we will be able to get a report of a list of the precinct voters that have voted at a precinct. And the candidates may buy that now. So those are the changes that are in there. It'll have little overall effect to the changes of our revenue in the budget at all. So we just request that you approve this public hearing and approve those actions.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Woodard? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Moved by Ashida.
Second.
Seconded by Ennis. Class your votes. Unanimous. Supervisor Worthy being absent. Okay, we'll now move to our.
Thank you.
Public hearing number seven, which is a request from the Tulare County Fire Department to approve recommended proposed fee schedule effective July first, two thousand fourteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Board members, CAO and legal counsel. My name is Mike Green, Battalion Chief, Tulare County Fire Department, representing Fire Chief Joe Garcia. And before you is a, a fee schedule proposal for two items. One item is for the, an increase to the nuisance declaration for weed abatement. And the other is two new items for copying and things like that for the public. The two new items for to establish a copy fee of ten cents, also a dollar for CD or DVD. We've not had that in our department before and we needed to establish that. The, the hazard fee is an increase of eighty-seven dollars. In two thousand and five was the last time that the department looked at the fee. And since last year, I made the analysis and came up with, with the representation on what it is now. The biggest difference there was in two thousand and five, the department was with Cal Fire. And two thousand and seven became the county department. And with that was new salaries and some different administration changes. So that was all taken into account. The procedure, mythology was all the same with just new values was added to it. And so the new value now is three hundred and forty-eight dollars. The old, the current fee now is, is two hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we changed to the three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So that's all we have.
Any questions?
Just, just a quick question. Chief, that's, that increase is full cost recovery, correct?
That is, that's correct.
Thank you.
Only question I had, and I think this one's for Chief Garcia back there, is you're missing a fee. The, the fee for business inspection is not on here, chief.
That is true.
And let's, let's keep it off there.
And I, you know, I don't know that this board has had a chance to consider that fee yet.
Well, considering the, considering, well, we are considerate of what our fees are and what, what impact they would place on the public. And so as you can see, from this particular fee that goes back to two thousand and five, we didn't even raise it in two thousand and seven. Down the line, we will be coming up with some small incremental raises to our fees, but not at this time for the business inspection.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I think it's been one of the issues that Chairman Cox and I have had for a long time is that when we talk about incremental increases, you can't wait nine years. We know things have been tough in the economy, but we need to keep up with our fees timely. Otherwise, we come up with hu, large fee increases, which does not settle well with the public. So we have any of these fees from nineteen, I mean, two thousand and five, we need to take a serious look at them.
We will review our, our fee lists. And I do appreciate your support in that, in that regard. And we may be coming back with revisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to address the board on this item from our county fire department, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
Moved by Ennis. Seconded by Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Supervisor Worthy being in Washington, DC. Thank you.
Thank you.
It will now move to our last item on the open session agenda day, which is Item Number Thirty-five, Request from Our County Administrative Office to Suspend Tulare County Agreement Number Two-five-seven-eight-six with Kitchell CEM Incorporated.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales Lang. My name is John Hess with the County Administrative Office. In, on December fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, the county entered into an agreement with Kitchell CEM Incorporated. The agreement is to provide construction management services for the construction of the South County Detention Facility in Porterville. The project is funded by state and local funds. The agreement with Kitchell is in the amount of four million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. To date, the county has paid Kitchell four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for their services. The agreement includes suspension and termination clauses. The suspension clause allows the county to immediately suspend work on the agreement upon notice to the consultant. The termination clause allows the county to terminate the agreement upon sixty-day written notice to the consultant. Staff is requesting that the board immediately suspend this agreement with Kitchell and provide the sixty-day written notice of termination pursuant to the agreement. Staff believes that this recommendation is the best business decision for the county at this time. The contract does not require the county to provide a cause for termination. The termination of this agreement will require the county to pay for any outstanding work that has not been invoiced as well as demobilization expenses incurred on the part of the consultant. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hess? Seeing none, we do have a request from Randy Rominger to speak to this matter. Rominger? If you would please state your name and address for the record, even though I already did.
Randy Rominger, excuse me, five-seven-zero-four West Prospect, Visalia, California. I'm, and Chairman Cox, members of the board, members of staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this matter. I am the project executive for the South County Detention Facility with Kitchell. This decision on staff's part does come at a surprise. We were informed yesterday afternoon that this is what the staff's intent was. And we understand that last week, and then today, you will hear a consent item regarding request to augment the project budget by four point one million. And those are not, you know, good results that we like to, to, to have at this point in the project, although there is a great deal of design yet to occur and, and construction. So we're, we have been and certainly are looking for ways to improve that. Now, the reason that I think we're there from a financial perspective is the, the budget that was set through the AB nine hundred application process in which both scope, schedule, and then the funding requests are all set, were set prior to our involvement in the project. And so a prescribed scope needed to be produced for a limited budget. And although the scope is achievable within that budget, it does have certain operational, functional longevity impacts. The, the desire that there be a full chilled plant with thermal energy storage, rear access to the, the cell chases, all enhance the operation of the building, but they all cost money. And, and that's, I think, why we're there from a budgeting perspective. The project is on schedule. The design development drawings were delivered by April twenty-second, which was the date prescribed by the AB nine hundred application. And we're now in a four-and-a-half-month period that finishes in early September for approvals. That's the, the estimating, design reviews, the state approvals through Board of State and Community Corrections, the Fire Marshal and then other state approvals, Public Works Board being included in that. And so this decision comes at a critical time during the project. There's a great deal of work that needs to occur in making sure the drawings are in good shape. Our BIM modeling, Building Information Modeling, is, is about to start. The commissioning process and developing commissioning plans, plan is, is continuing. Very critical part of the project. By changing this, this course, we are a specialist in detention facilities. Myself, most of my background is in detention. Our project manager, Jim Anderson, is a detention specialist, as is the balance of our staff. Jim, thirteen-year resident of Tulare. I'm a twenty-six-year resident of Visalia. By making this change, we're removing Tulare County jobs. And as a specialist, as a highly qualified firm doing this business, we appeal to the board that you would give us thirty days. Give us thirty days to work with staff to rectify the, I guess, the decision or the recommendation that's being made and the reasons for that. We, we believe that, that we have something to contribute to the project and are the best qualified firm for the project and would like to have that opportunity to, to just rectify those, those differences if there are some.
Questions? Okay, we, Mr. Rousseau?
Thank you. Jim Rousseau, County Administrative Officer. I appreciate your comments, Randy. You know, we do have, you indicate that Kitchell has, and you and Jim have jail experience. And we have experience in working with Kitchell in the past. You know, my, my staff has jumped on board in this project heavily the last couple of months. And as Mr. Hess indicates in his staff report, good job, John. We believe it's, staff believe it's in the best interest of the county to go into a different direction. And that's why we're bringing this item before you. We're also working on addressing some of Mr. Rominger's concerns about the project where it's at. We don't necessarily agree with comments, but we do. We will bring it something back to the board in the next week or two that will, that will answer some of those, those questions. And again, I think that, I think the collective sentiment of our group, Mr. Dickerson, Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Lindsay, Mr. Hess and myself, is that this is in the best interest of the county that we do this at this time. And that's why we are recommending this in this agenda item.
Vanderpoel?
You know, I, I do put full faith in staff that are more in, more of experts in these particular areas to make such recommendations. One of my concerns is, is that I want to make sure this project doesn't get off schedule if this decision is made. So I want to make sure that we don't jeopardize any of the grant monies that we are being awarded from the state and that we don't end up having put all this work into it and staff time and county money and only to have this project fall apart because of this change at this time.
Supervisor Vanderpoel, I, I appreciate your, your concerns. We wouldn't be bringing this forward if we felt we were going to jeopardize the funding or the timeline.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we allow thirty more days, that really puts us under the gun to accomplish this project. So that's why if we're going to change, we need to change now.
Yeah, I, I'm not questioning the timeline. I just want to make sure that we don't throw off our ability to get this project done by making this decision right now.
Counsel, we do have this set for closed session. Do you feel that we need to go into closed session at this time? Yes or no? Okay. That having been said, we will, I'll bring this back to the board. Any additional questions or are you, are we ready to take action? Does this, does this require a four-fifth vote?
Excuse me, unanimous vote. It's not listed as a four-fifth vote.
Thank you. Then the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I would make a motion to suspend Tulare County Agreement Two-five-seven-eight-six with Kitchell Kim.
Second.
A motion by Ennis, seconded by Ashida. Cash votes unanimous. Supervisor Worthy being absent. Thank you. Okay, we will now, that concludes our open session agenda items. We have need for additional closed session. Madam Counsel?
We have items A through I on your board's closed session agenda. Item A is off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcement.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session. Michelle? I do have this one.
Thank you.